That includes all grant administration, engineering services, bidding, construction and observation, all the flows out with the grant. So pretty much after it gets approved, we'll take care of everything from there. So we started two contracts, one for project one. RP was a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars and project two, a hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred. And today I'd like to ask for a motion to approve and enter into the contract agreements between City of Eldred and Tennessee Engineers for Engineering and Grant Administration Services of CBPG-DR, project one and two.
Move.
Moved by Marcy, supported by Jackson. Any discussion?
When was that one issued? Was it a new one or is that one that was already?
This was a newer one. We have, we have a bunch of grants in the works. We've got about three, four years of SRF in the works and going. This one was completely separate. It's through CBPG. And it was related to some flooding that happened a few years back. Any city that experienced any inconveniences was encouraged to apply. City applied and worked through it.
Okay, so, alright, I just wondered, I'm trying to make sense of your feelings when you're at the city. I appreciate it.
Any other discussion? Cena, how about?
Jackson?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Phil Pauski?
Yes.
Frederick?
Yes.
Eric Druck?
Yes.
Okay, I've got one more thing. I know the gym issue is a big issue. Try to make it in the air. This is an issue that needs to be addressed. Springboard assist for valve and there's just a hot water tank. It must be able to get access to. We'll start it off. If we want to have a key fob over at the field house, we can get access to the gym or something. If you get in there, we can get in there and check if you know hot water tanks are older. You know, who knows what the habit to at the furnace. There's just some things in there. It's a valve we already had, we said on the springboard system. I don't know. I'm still trying to investigate what happened while the springboard heads blew out from the locker room. I'm not sure if it's from the roof that way. They took a big fan on there and lost the air. Were they supposed to check that for how that were heating that room? Springboard closed, so we had flooded a couple locker rooms. We had game piles inside the gym. So I'm looking for what procedure I need to follow. Except that we just know, and what do you know, so we don't enter the gym somewhere wrong or something happens. So, because I know it's a hot item.
Yeah, so I think that.
I've got stuff in there that could potentially be, you know, hazardous for everybody. But I might be quick act, I don't know, so.
Correct, so I think that you should contact the chief.
I'm not getting it addressed here, right, he's here now.
Yeah.
He can just tell me, you know, he could write me a form out. It's based on the evening, because the staff's upset and there's people there. It could be more people. I just want to make sure it's all under one way and there's no conflict.
Yeah, so the procedure would be there's always an officer that's working every option that I have access to. Key inside the new room and that's.
So what I'd like to review that is in contact. Got one number on the ground stand, we'll get a stand up, we call that stand. I'd like to have that number as one, be the name number and have for her people if they need to.
Correct.
And this way everybody follows and there'll be nobody doing anything different.
So it's a supervisor.
Supervisor. So that'd be one, that'd be six.
It's the same number every time. It's supervisor phone, and I can give it to you.
We, we had, we didn't have it for the, for water.
Make sure all my guys have it.
Yeah, through the chair.
I listened to the recording from the meeting on September eighteenth, twenty twenty-four yesterday. The chief stated regarding that gym being in the Zamboni room, that a key fob would be given. Keys in the key fob would be given to Larry Ordis for access immediately. And if any other access was needed, they could then call me on, on call supervisor.
I think that changed because of.
It would never change.
No, because it was vandalized and there were only two.
It was vandalized.
It most certainly was.
We, this was voted on this being allowed in this gym based on what the chief said was going to happen. It seems like every time we're told something is going to happen, this body votes. And then somebody goes behind our backs and changes.
I would think they need to talk to the chief about that.
Two jerks.
I've been recording. He said a key were given to him, so I would make a motion that the chief. I don't know that the chief would hear that.
So, so if we, if we do, let me just explain, if you do give a key out and there's no, doesn't have the recording of who goes inside. It just, it just says key access, so you have no, we have absolutely.
Assign him a key fob to go with the key.
Through the chair. If the concern is, is getting in there quickly.
Emergency.
Why is Larry lives and went apart and keys in his pocket? How is that going to get him quicker than an officer driving over there?
But there's multiple officers. You got supervisor, you got several officers. The issue is, is exactly that. The lights are getting shut off, the breakers are getting shut off. And gym has been bad on it. So that's why we do, like, we have some equipment in there.
And the key's are on the off. I just want to make sure we can get in and get access and make this longer.
There's always a supervisor.
If they make this longer than fifteen minutes, we could make it two or three hours. It's a personal requirement, it's a. Supervisor, could be a locker.
Yeah, if they're there.
But make sure everybody knows, if you go, it could be a couple hours what we're working on. Can be a cabinet.
Through the clock. Through the chair. Mr. Pauski? Um, Chair, hey, I, not only do you, gentlemen, I understand the drama. I understand your drama. I love the inspector's drama. As you're here. But, Chair, I'd like to talk to the building inspector, okay? And I hate to bring you into this trap, but that is a major power room in a industrial facility. You know, and I'm sure you did, you know, we got it done, right?
Yes, that's true.
So, sand partners, I know that, that facility, that, we're gonna have to get access to that room separate from the gym. I don't care if you gotta build a wall, if you gotta tear a wall down, if you gotta blow doors in it. I don't care what it costs. Make a motion some way, guess what? Let it, let it happen, because here's the issue. You have four eighty coming off the transfers. Are there any in that age area out there? That's not just. Openly assertive, that gone kills you better than doing it. And what gets me is, is that right now, we've got a secured gym for our sworn police officers or officers, as we've got it now. And they're in an area there that any water on the floor, there's a boiler, there's a water, any water in the floor, mixed with that electricity, we've got potential for absolute disaster. And right now, you guys will be on ones ahead, and I wish for you to have a key to it. I would love for you to have your exclusive gym. Matter of fact, we provided, we tried to provide an MRP or whatever it was. Oh, reg, appropriations, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars could modify it and make that gym. But right now, we've got that gym positioned in our facility over there that our EPW has to get to. And it wants storage for stuff. The person that works down there, I don't want that key. I personally do not want them to have a key for obvious reasons, okay? But when you have a major incident down there, Chief, with water and electricity, and we can't get in there, we can't shut it off. Because motor rooms, right? Motor rooms, that is a motor room, correct?
Chair, through the chair, that is the main, that's a separate room off of that room that you're going to enter through the gym. That's the main transfer to the entire building.
And you have to, you have to, under certain circumstances, you have to have protective equipment, special protective equipment either to enter that room.
Yeah, I just tried to have our class shoots and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I agree with the chair that it's probably a good idea to get an access to that room.
Some other way.
Other way, I have to go through the gym and then into that walk.
So, I just have one question. Why would you recommend that room to the gym owner? If the whole day is going on.
That room was not, that room was.
I didn't ask you.
That, that room was not. The room was brought to our attention because we wanted a piece of property at the time to put in a gym. And later we scored it, and that's why we had Tennessee engineering. Um, you still have those, you know what I hate to have, because it's a long time ago. But if you can talk to, if we get, could counsel get a set of those diagrams that were drawn up?
Just, I'll get a grade of our own.
I appreciate it, because that was a perfect. We've seen that, we've seen that happen. And if that problem, then all of a sudden it become a, 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 a back burner issue. And Reg, what happened to, what happened to your appropriations? What is the library of that?
Well, we did not submit. I was waiting to get information and also the officer said that she did start this a few years ago. That's when he, it was my intention to get it from her. We could do the remodeling, which was going to the locker rooms, we got an engineering, crazy architect. Being in the bathroom, showing facilities can all be, you know, remodeled and the, the equipment in between. I never received anything, so we did not submit this to our state official.
Just me.
Then we come to this patch, all of a sudden.
I didn't.
I know I did. And through the, and through the chair, it was picked, it was picked by the people that were looking for. Where's the place with that? Because the other place it was supposed to go was supposed to be down at the Seaver Center. And it was brought to our attention, right down at the Seaver Center. And that wasn't, it was Sandy Law is still using that every week. So with that being said, we tried to come up with an alternative, and I said, well, you can get appropriations for it, or money for it. And now all of a sudden it become a real quick fix. And now we do have a company that said.
Can we finish?
That, that's an issue. Your water down there is an issue. Because that hot water tank goes, what's two inches of? Uh, water on the floor, you have four eighty, it's probably two oh seven, four eighty, big numbers it pairs. But anything over two forty will curl your head.
There's a furnace in there also.
A furnace in there also.
Yes.
Um, Chair, since you spoke about what, what, you know, how is the, I mean, I know you're not an electrician by trade, but.
There's four forty coming.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's four, it's, it's four eighty.
The ice making.
It's three phase, I think you get two oh seven off of it.
Two seventy seven.
It's a phase. But that being said, it's not, it's not your regular house office, so.
So, it's really, oh, Brian, he needs access to.
I just wanted to know.
Yeah, he just, he needs his own key to get in there. That's more important to the gym. Okay, that's more important to the gym.
Yeah, I just want, no, let's proceed.
So, like, if there's an officer always on duty, can we reach out to an officer? Because that was the whole reason of having it secured by key fobs. In that case, why did we waste the money on a key fob?
Larry's not gonna graduate in the gym.
I guess that question, do you want, I want to just look at moving the stuff that I need to do, the hazard stuff, and see if there's something I can do with that. I don't know what the cost would be, you know, move the hot water tank and some things out of there possibly. Get the door somewhere else and then you lock the door. That enters from their gym, it's that electric room, and then figure out the door. And we can help knock the lock out, put a door in the neck, but then it's a big solution there. I haven't really let you look in here to see if there's an area I can knock the ball out of. And I'll let, we're talking about this and stuff I can look into.
Thank you.
You know, it's like to, to explore that.
Yeah, let's do that.
Through the chair, you have a motion to that.
He can go look and see, can I maybe come back and present?
You have that line, I'll look. Chair, I'd like for you to go out, you go watch the gym now. It is what it is, okay? But with that, to secure that up, so the gold officers, I mean, heaven forbid, okay? But we, we, we made a quick fix. We got that equipment in there. And, you know, appropriations remain, we're about to put a nice gym in there. Oh, the next gym, I would like to see it for everybody. But with the issues of guns, I'll let you.
Well, I'm gonna build my cars, please.
Okay, I, I.
There's a hole upstairs. There's a lot of room up there. Yep, I'm all for it.
Okay, so I'm good with, you know, calling, we got that settled, so I think I'm good. Now looking to move so much stuff out of there, so I'll need to get some.
Wonderful, thank you.
One quick question for the chief as well. Sorry. Um, just a scenario, is it, if you want to have two, three officers that can say maybe a night is. What happens if, all three of them are on a call with the camera? And if an emergency go on and he needs to get in there for some reason, like, what would we do?
I'd be able to, I mean, break an officer off, or if I said, either break down the road, or break down the road.
Okay, so we would have some kind of.
For our fairness, I can't even get the drawing block when you have. After an officer. It, it happens, but if he has an emergency, he has to get in right away. I, like I said, I don't see a problem with that, the key fob. You guys, God bless you, Larry.
I appreciate you. I really appreciate all that you do.
I got a question for you. The, the street suite, okay? I get questions every day, yeah, every day. Is there some type of schedule?
Yeah, you know, all the things broke down, it's gonna be a month. Couple times a week this time of the year, and we stop, you know, it's week every week. You know, there's not really a set schedule again in the May. And then we start at least a week or two, see how it is out there. If it's still rough and still bring a lot of stuff, we'll save it. And it gets cleaned up and reworked, and we'll do it like a gym on a week or so. And pour the ball in, we're out there like, oh, at least a ball, so it's not.
Is it possible during the summertime that you can't hit one set, highly scheduled?
Well, someone, there's sometimes he's out there, he's not really. It's been summer, you know, it's, it's, I mean, they have, you know, the time, nobody sweeps off. None of the cities go sweep early, you know, you just have to sweep it. You got one, you know, we're trying to make it last, or then, you know, you know, you keep sweeping, but, you know, the wear and tear on that. I get what you're saying, because we are out this week, so, and we'll probably be out next week, just so you know.
Can't imagine how many questions.
I can, I can, I get, I get, thank you.
Alright, city, city, uh, chief building, official building department.
Oh, you know, some things coming up, but we have a message.
Alright, field house. Can you put the microphone on, so we can hear you?
Yeah, thank you. Um, so I have a couple things. Stuff like, for, we're looking at. And hopefully, I had that on my lifeguard. Everybody's got their certifications after two, and they serve their class next week. And all strong source, so they're going to, they're going to pass, um, wages for my lifeguards. My regular lifeguard, I'd like to have a starting wage of fifteen, which says that's doable. My lead lifeguard, whose name is Stina, he works as a lifeguard, he's a former PBEers as a lead lifeguard. He knows how to test the pool for chemicals, how to do the chemicals. And also he will be my, my right hand person. I like to give him a raise to fifty.
Go, speak to the motion.
Yeah.
Lead at eighteen fifty and a lifeguard at fifteen, probably, like, yeah.
How many lifeguards?
I will have eight total, including.
Seven, they're fifteen.
Are they part-time? They will be part, he will have closer to full-time orders, but not. But the other seven will be part-time?
Yeah, they're part-time. The thing, the thing with lifeguards is they can only sit out there for so many minutes in the sun with them, okay? Then they can go in and clean or take on their, you know, do other things or whatever. But you're not out there a couple entire days. Alright, so, moved by Frederick, recorded by Jackson?
Oh my god.
Any other discussion? Cena, how about? Jackson?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Phil Pauski?
Yes.
Frederick? Eric Druck? Yes. Thank you. Um, the other thing. I have these, I take these off, these will be our general hours, um, house siege rules, stuff like that. It seems like that took a little, because that would be bad. Um, so what we're gonna do is, come one day straight in the week. We're gonna have swim lessons in the morning. Swim lessons will be, um, ten, eleven, eleven and twelve. We will see, not any response we get with that before we determine if we have any more than one session going on at a time. Whatever, I got, there's three people who, who, like, they're supposed to have. We are also have one, we're swimming only, and I have a parent. Come up and ask me. Only if you want me to ask. So, I said, yeah, we have to do that. Um, you're going to be open for open swim from noon until six. Um, Saturday, then Sunday, noon until seven for open swim. Um, they're talking with Larry, um, we're not gonna do the pool patches.
Yeah, or.
There's just, couldn't be a pain, people don't wanna swim them, or swim them on their swimsuits. And they say you put them on, and then they ended up getting the pool and taking them off and giving them to their friends through the fence so they can get in. We're gonna end up losing more money that way. So it's gonna be ten dollars to get in, period, ten dollars to get in. I've got in the rules that here that, you know, they can have their refunds if they rest, they leave because they're not following the rules. Um, there's no refunds for, because, you know, we have, um, no control over that. Um, we're gonna have adult and senior swim only. Um, Tuesdays or Thursdays, six to eight P M. Um, like you said, the price would be ten dollars for seniors and veterans. I'm gonna do eight dollars for their discount. Um, just a couple other things, and most of the pool rules are mostly stuck at, from the state. The ones that are just for sure state laws are ed and. But we are gonna have a couple main rules, like no one under fourteen is getting in without a parent or guardian. They have to have, even their high school idea, if they wanna bring, we have that in mind. But we're not gonna have a problem that we had of ten-year-olds being dropped off with eight of their younger siblings, and they never look until younger siblings again the rest of the day. Um, so, no one under fourteen without a parent or guardian. If they're fourteen to eighteen, they're not gonna be able to bring any more than two younger children with them, period. They have to be able to watch, we're not gonna be babysitting service. It's, it's, and really committed to it not being forced there. Those are like the main bullet points, all the babies, we have under two-year-old kids in the family. Um, if they're in diapers, they have to wait a little swim, because they don't get in, and that's just. Little problems. That was, like, we had.
Chair, one thing, we know that our lifeguards have a final say, the lifeguard has control of the pool. They have to be absolutely.
Absolutely.
Because I've been in there before, some lifeguards were saying, listen, you guys just stop, stop, stop. After ten times, you're still not doing it.
Yeah, no.
The guard has to leave, and they're still not.
No.
So, there, there has to be, this won't be fun, but if you got one person, it's hard. It's a group of, group of, group of. Chair, people are, I don't want this one to have fun, we can't do this.
Exactly.
So this I was looking at.
Yeah, yeah.
And your lifeguards, what's the minimum age for your lifeguards right now?
Uh, I have one that's, that's fifteen, there'll be sixteen in August. And, um, before I said eighteen, I was thinking about the law, but it was just the board policy. We kinda hired a fifteen, she's gonna be sixteen, she's swimming three years, so it's not a.
Even that fifteen-year-old, sixteen-year-old.
Absolutely.
Forty dollars.
Yes.
Okay, everybody, make sure that everybody's on board.
Oh, yeah.
Start, another lifeguard.
Yeah.
Here's the chair, yes? I just want to know, hello, in your booth here, she, well, cigarettes, we expect them to be are permitted in the hallway.
So you've got teenagers feeding on the. And I'm paying fifteen dollars a night? You're gonna go up there and say that? She's not, I'm pissed off, I've got to say. I don't want you to collect myself, I'm not a student of these people. I go out there, I'm pissed, I'm pissed on them, I'm horrified.
I'm just gonna get, because the position is to be on, so if somebody wants to go outside, they pick, they kind of grass or whatever. They can, without her, and they come back and they pay, then they'll know, and they'll be glad, you know. But, um, together, not gonna be bringing any, or any, in there. It's not, it's not. Okay, so that's that. And the other thing is, um, I'd like to bring out Mr. Marvin Yates and a gentleman from WJZZ Radio in Detroit. They would like to run a jazz festival at the Field House at the end of the summer.
Hi, everybody, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Beautiful. Don Allen, who is the originator and, uh, historical voice of WJZZ Radio, which was a historical jazz radio station here in Detroit for many years. Uh, Don was actually the last person on the air when they shut WJZZ off. And he started WJZZ back in twenty fifteen. And I joined him a couple years ago, and we're building the station up. So they took jazz off of commercial radio altogether. And so now we're regulated to the internet. And, but we are a global entity. Our station plays around the world, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We have listeners all over the world constantly. We're doing almost half a million listeners per day. And, uh, on certain days, we even have over a million. Uh, we have some, um, historical personalities other than Don. We have Kyle Lamont, we have Boogie, and we have Eugene Edwards, O'Neal Stevens. We even have a DJ from Italy, and I can never pronounce his name. And we, right now, uh, so we did take a tour, and still it was very nice of us to take a part in a tour of the Field House. And I spoke to her about possibly us doing a, uh, doing an event there. Our constituency is thirty-five years and older people. It's very calm, very laid-back type situation. We would bring in a couple live bands, and, uh, people could bring their chairs and sit. Uh, we would keep anything cool or drink anything outside of the field itself in the, uh, cafeteria area there. And, uh, so we just wanted to, uh, give you all some information on us and hope you'll, uh, take a, uh, leave that for us. Yeah, but you all know, uh, president and most.
For the whole respect, you're, you're past, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
It's actually a pretty nice and generous.
Yes.
Parts maybe.
So we were just talking about that.
Yeah.
Actually, I've been, uh, we've been on the major jazz stage, uh, festival. He's been in and around, so, and so, and he, he tours in Detroit, that's, uh, that's living. Uh, we've done, we've done, okay, we've done the, uh, the Johnny Lord for three years. We've done, uh, the Down River Festival for three years. Uh, Tim Horn for, hold on, ten years. And Don has actually done the Detroit, and that's the jazz festival in the whole, in the country, as well.
Part of the, have his, 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 his.
Yeah.
Do you have a, a particular date in mind?
We were looking at. We were looking at sometime towards the end of the summer before the soccer league starts, that would turn up to do you guys, we hopefully can do it on a Saturday though, and, uh, maybe kind of start early afternoon, we'll be done by midweek, or nine o'clock.
Okay, so just, I, I guess.
Yeah.
But what's the end of, like, stuff, end of September or something like that?
I told him when I had it, before you guys had it.
I like the way you did it. What do you want?
Can I make a motion?
Sure.
All right. What's your motion?
I support it.
All right, and do you have any second to that?
Yes.
All right, so moved by Frederick, supported by Phil Paski, and a discussion.
Just three questions, how many, uh, how many, uh, both people?
Two, three hundred.
Maybe we bring on lawn chairs, this is excellent, it's a great idea because we thought about, it's not air conditioned in the summer time, so you gotta pick the date that you ask.
Yeah, I said September, it's probably a little cooler, yeah.
But, uh, we're set, it's, it's probably bring, bring lawn chairs in, you've got a lot of, a lot of green.
But I have, uh, who, like, in there?
We're gonna find out.
Yeah.
It's, uh, echo, it's like a giant echo, timber, but my, our sound guys have speaker arrays that, more or less, aim the sound where you want it to go, so.
The more people in there, the more it will be so loud, you know, as far as absorb sound.
To the chair. I was just, just a quick question, why not outside?
That's possible, that's not true as well. Yeah, it's just the fact that you're always subject to rain and situations like that, so.
We usually have deep tensions.
Yeah, and so we did think about that, and that's a possibility, I mean, we can look at it, and I just thought it would be neat, as I've seen them do it over at the Ford Center in the Morning Earth, and in the same type of situation, I thought it would be good.
Well, my other thing was, I didn't know what charts them for, something like that. It was a little rare. So, I mean, you know, we charge soccer two twenty-five an hour, play, so, I mean, I don't know, I, I didn't know.
Really?
I think that we probably should do, um, the company, uh, these schedule, um, I think that the rental that is gonna get more popular, um, and so we should have already have something on file, or somebody wants to run it.
To the chair, I will talk to the, say, assets, like, with, like, a line or.
Any other special? Same one?
Hello?
Jackson?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Phil Pasky?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Your correct. Yes. Right before you go though, um, we need to approve this, these rules. Okay, so then we gotta change the order, so we're completely. With the exception of, uh, serious, we're gonna need our map. And then also, um, the fees for, uh, open swim, admission is hours, and for senior and freshman, we thought it was eight hours, and that was great. Also, um. The swim lessons are Tuesday to Thursday with, uh, hundred and sixty dollars fee for four classes, and then, when you do have a couple of pool hours, who wants to make that motion? All right, Phil Pasky?
And the board of five.
Marcy, and a discussion?
Yes. How'd you go with the kind of, I average?
It's comparable with other things, and I didn't want to be resident to members, because I want people to come and, it's like, you know, Rich doesn't, a fool, he's a fool, he kind of, you know. But Rich figuring out how much every penny is, is a dollar, so it's good. All right, any other special? I'm hopeful. Jackson?
Yes.
Marcy?
Yes.
Phil Pasky?
Yes.
Gregory?
Yes.
Your correct.
Yes.
I think the black guy, it should wait something. I'm just saying, for sure to, if he does.
We have, we have two weeks, we're good. Uh, State of the Share Finance Director. Corporation House.
I have a letter here, written by Mr. Coogan, City Attorney, his words, I'm not gonna read this letter. In December twenty twenty-three, I had this gentleman who had backed into the Public Safety Commission to talk about the minimum policy of the city's chief of police, indicated a lot of changes have been made since the nineteen twenties, and it was second step in the twenty-first century. I discussed the requirements and best practices for hiring a qualified chief, suggested a minimum educational requirement of at least a bachelor degree in criminal justice or public administration. Joe Alvarado indicated that a master's degree would be more appropriate. Uh, Safety Commission was to formally come up with new rules and requirements for hiring police chiefs. At the very next meeting in January twenty twenty-four, Mr. Alvarado made a motion to hire Mr. Canal to be the next police chief for the city of Melville. I thought this was strange since the current chief, Mr. Jones, is not the target. I wrote a memo that Safety Commission describing the rules and procedures that have been in the city for one hundred years. Simply once a vacancy occurs, notice supposedly public that the city is accepting applications, applications are submitted, which are vetted by the Public Safety Commission, and the commission interviews the top candidates. None of that took place, I was told by a member of the commission that the chief was promised a job, I'm not sure how you can promise a job to anyone. No such resolution ever took place, promising any job to anyone. Public Safety Commission, uh, months passed and no policy, or no new policies have been implemented regarding the requirements of the Melville Police Chief position. More recently, H R has notified me that Chief Canal has indicated that Safety Commission permits him to work from home. As a city attorney, I'm not aware of any resolution or decisions that were being made allowing him to work from home. No police officer, firefighter, or BPW worker has been permitted to work from home, it's very difficult to supervise without being physically present. Second issue, I want to discuss the problems we are having in the multitude of lawsuits being filed against the city of Melville now. This may ultimately lead to our bankruptcy. City officials, according to myself, have been inundated with many emails, voicemails, text messages, and letters. The topics of the correspondence is regarding the concerns for what is happening in the police department, and inappropriate conduct of some officers. On January thirty-first of this year, my office received a complaint involving inappropriate conduct of an officer, was informed that this matter was under investigation, however, to date, no such discipline is taken place. Additionally, on August twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, came to my attention that our officer was involved in multiple violations of the Taser on the citizen. Based on my background as a criminal justice prosecutor for some fourteen years, prosecutor for decades, and a private practice attorney, the conduct that I observed will lead to criminal charges and extreme liability on behalf of the city. I contacted the chief, who assumed the irony of the situation, and indicated there would be an internal and external investigation. On October sixteen, twenty twenty-four, I again was told by the chief that the conclusion of the Michigan State Police investigation should be done in a matter of months. Mr. Bolton and I were also informed that all of the videos were sent to the Michigan State Police and the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office. On that day, October sixteenth, I requested all information regarding rules, policies, and procedures that were violated by the officers to be provided to my office. On January twenty-fourth, I requested all documents be provided to my office, including all reports, allegations of misconduct, or abuse, all investigative findings and determinations, and all witness statements related to the incidents, including with that number two investigative thousand reports. To date, I still do not have all the documents. Mid-March of this year, I took it upon myself to reach out to the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, I spoke with Joe Johnson to inquire the status of the coming investigation. My astonishment, he asked me why Connecticut State Police of the Wayne County Prosecutor's Office received the videos of other incidents involving abuse by these officers, videos that he saw on the news. It was reported to Mr. Bolton and me that it had been done in October twenty twenty-four. I met with Mr. Bolton and the deputy chief, who stated the videos in question were not sent anywhere because there was not a complaint filed by a citizen. We do not need a complaint to be filed by citizens when the facts are right in front of us. The videos have all been posted all over the news and social media, including Channel Seven and Facebook. On April third, once again to my surprise, I received an email from the chief, who would now like me to set up a meeting to discuss the options and the steps that need to be taken regarding these incidents. It's been ten months. Prior to setting up any meeting with the chief, I required that all documents I requested on August twenty-third, and again, January twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, be presented to my office for review. Public Safety is in charge of managing, directing, and supervi- supervising our police department, and needs to start doing that. Why has nothing been done? Why has this been allowed to take place? On April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-five, Mr. Bolton, Deputy Chief Martinez stated that the deputy chief could not light up the officers due to them being in the same union, whereby he informed me that the chief comes back still and is signing policy rules of violation of the officers. On May sixth, I was informed that the deputy chief had changed his recommendations seeking termination to up to termination. Further, Mr. Bolton informed me that upon a discussion with the chief, the chief indicated that he did not feel comfortable in signing the violations against the officer. Policy rules violations are separate from any criminal violation of Wayne County Prosecutor's Office, the time to act has long since passed. Being action of the police department and Public Safety supports the plaintiffs in these cases against the city for failure to control, supervise, and discipline these officers using excessive force, aggressive behavior, and lawful disregard of city policy. In my opinion, there's more than enough evidence to proceed for these officers' removal. Under Section B, impotency to perform the duties of us at our office, Section E, lawful neglect of duties, Section F, corrupt or lawful misfeasance, Section G, lawful misconduct to injure or corrupt the safety. If the Safety Commission will not take action, or the police department, perhaps this body should be requesting resignations and will refer these matters to the Attorney General's Office. Continued failure to act may cause the city to fall into bankruptcy or taxpayers millions of dollars. Sorry.
Steve Chair, is he asking for a, uh, motion to, to retire from his office?
So, at the, that letter was written since the Public Safety Commission meeting, wherein there was action taken by the Public Safety Commission to, uh, order that the investigation be concluded within thirty minutes, so that was, like, Tuesday, so there has been some action taken.
So, was that, who is concluding the, the investigation?
The internal evidence, so.
So you're telling me she needs to, we have to finish?
No, no. Assistant Chief Martinez, the investigation has to be, whoever, everything turned over.
Oh, okay, okay.
And this is an action taken.
To the chair, let me, let me, the original, consider it happened. There's been multiple, uh, eight pool last year? Hey, Captain, and John, what's up?
All right, was your kinder study booked?
Hello, everybody, um, I have a business license here from eighteen seventy-three Terrence. Um, it looks like they have changed their name to Terrance Auto Group from Nationwide Auto. So, just for that reason alone, um, I'm gonna have to be united, um, we have a moratorium against new, used power dealerships, we don't allow anymore, uh, so, just for that, just that, like, there is a reason to be united. But in, um, in spite of that, they have, um, been really difficult to work with, constantly parking in a front, blocking the view, it's, it's super unsafe there on that corner, they park all the way to the outside, uh, the lot is way too small, it's a sixty foot running toward the auto dealership, it's just way too small, so, just for various reasons, I need to be united. Does I need a motion? Is that that?
All right, if you, uh, check this out. Yeah, to the chair, I know a little bit about this, um, I can address a little bit about the Nationwide and the Terrance changing of the name, I do not know anything about parking in my system, but, um, I do believe that the reason they changed their name from Nationwide to Terrance is, um, they were having some issues with the name Nationwide, right? They were getting confused with Nationwide Insurance, this is a family-owned, um, facility, so they came to us, mentioned that they were changing their name from Nationwide to Terrance because we're getting different name changes, we're getting mail from Nationwide, we're getting color mixed up, um, so I must believe, I know there's not a shared ownership in the world.
It's totally the same owner?
Same owner, right, yeah.
Did he get through the chair, and he asked, and he asked the other? Um, I know that the, yeah, I know what you're getting, what you're getting.
I don't, or?
And then, here, what's your building?
Joab, and then there's my building, my house.
Okay, so they're all the same, the same people that, of course, are, for years.
So, the last sale, uh, Ernst Lee transaction was on two twenty-nine of twenty to A J T Auto.
Which still owns the building and manages the building, which is our company.
Are they here?
No, that's our, it's our company, we own.
You own?
Yeah.
So you're A J T?
Yeah, we're A J T Auto.
And you want to be called Terrance?
Yes, we're, A, A J T holds the building.
Okay.
We own multiple properties, so our commercial properties are held with A J T, and A J T Investments, which holds another property down the street here in Melville, too. And you got a lot of, yeah, we got a lot of the speaker on the manner.
Yeah, for sure.
So this is what's going on, my father wanted to be started from the business, we taught us this business, we've been in this business, we've been involved, and Nationwide is a name that's not a state, not Georgia, and Columbus, Ohio, it's a very common name for a two dollar dealership, most of our sales are in wholesaling, and they sell online to various states all over America, and what was going on is somebody would come to purchase the vehicle online, and they would go up Nationwide, and they would see the Nationwide auto sales out of Columbus, Ohio, that's when they're invited for fraud, and that was, and that's, so, there was only a gambling issue, not only the insurance issue, it's a lot, it's a very common name, and we were getting myself, uh, locations in Georgia, that was all over the news and a lot of problems. Terrance was our family name, and we thought that would be the best decision to use our family name to grow. Came to the city, we asked for permission, we told them we wanted to do this, we submitted for our new dealer license, we put, took possession of it because the dealer license holder is the owner, it's not the only owner of the corporation, so we've got a holding license, we let all that, we worked through the whole process, and right now, we're certainly on a lot of agenda, as some of you guys noticed, it's been empty, we paid the lot, we're cleaning the building, we're cleaning everything up, we've been working hard, there's a lot of places that have multiple businesses that are on this that are out of the way, so anytime somebody parks any vehicle with no license plates, it's getting weighed on us, we don't block, no, we don't park on nobody's house, we only park on the side of our building, there's a mechanic shop way next door, there's a dealership on the other side, repair site, everything is getting weighed directly on us, we never park on anybody's house, we have respect for everybody, we're taxpayers also, which I love, we should be allowed to park on the side of our own building, we park sometimes because we have one day where we can park on Monday, one day we can't park on Tuesday, so we park on the side of our own cars, and we usually take them back into the lot, whatever stays in the street has a valid registration and plate on it, and the search, or uninsured cars in the street, and leaving them there, so, um, when the owner comes around, and if he sees a car with no plate, the owner, it's simple, oh, it has to be from the dealership, but the mechanic shops in Melville, this is a growing issue for every mechanic shop in Melville, they should not be allowed to have cars with no, no plates, no insurance, and all this, so, we only be mechanic shops in Eastern Michigan, and the law is you cannot have a car, I'm pretty sure, it should be like that in the city too, every car has to be, right?
It's a big law, so it's a question of you.
Has to be registered, has to be insured to be there, and all these shops in Melville, something's been going on for years, they just roll these cars out there, and everybody will say, oh, it must be the little dealer over here, he's the one who owned this car, which gets you upset, and gets everybody upset, and also the residents upset, and the issue of the parking in the front, we do not park on the sidewalk, we do not park on the east side, we have, we park on our driveway, we're allowed to park on our driveway, the problem is that we cannot control the public, we tried to reserve our ability to control the public, and have them not park over there, because we do understand as a safety hazard, it's a safe gap for anybody pulling out or pulling in for them to see what's going on and who's coming and who's going, we tried our best, but we cannot control everybody, anyway, the people just come and they decide to park like that, we go out and tell them, please, lock your vehicle, it cannot be parked like this, and then you have, also, like I said, the. And then you have also, like I said, the side, Monday you can't park, Tuesday you can't park. So what happens is a mechanic shop goes there, bunch of cars. We have a lot of, we have a lot of cars that we come in. So then where do you park? What do you go park? What do they do? They go park down the street in front of somebody's house or something, which we always... It's a problem, this has been going on for a long time. But at the same time, we're the same business, we're the same owners, we're the same business type, we're the same R and D. We're now applying for a new business, we're now applying to get a new business. We came to the city, we asked the city before we did this. We didn't call, we didn't just do this off the head and then come and lay down. We came to the city, we talked to everybody, went through the front channel, we make sure everybody, we apply us to say, we got it all booked, it's safe, they can clear out, and we still have the same company on the same business.
Would you?
Yes.
How would you examine the receipt?
The... We received a lot of tickets in the past.
You've received a lot of tickets?
In the past, yeah, we have received a lot of tickets on any vehicle. They all ordinance officer hooks, which the city asks me the time to write complaint forms or file a lawsuit. Any car that would have no license plate on it would sign the register to us, but I would get a ticket right now for the business. And that was what was going on.
When was the last ticket issued?
We received one ticket about two and a half weeks ago.
Oh, so...
The plate was behind the glass because there's that issue with people stealing plates. They steal wheel plates and transfer them to car plates to go promote our own vehicles and transport these vehicles. It's a common thing that's going on. And for overnight when the leaf card, you'd like the wheel plate on, so what we do is we put it inside the vehicle lock so that nobody comes and steals the plate, most of them are crimes of it. Well, apparently when the ordinance officer came, he didn't see the plate, so he will take down the vehicle.
Through the chair. I would like to table this, there's more of this.
Do you have any other motions?
Yeah. Yeah, here's... Did you turn off this thing?
Oh shit. When would you like to vote?
Uh, so since either year in twenty twenty-two, we run the bins, we run the plates. If there's no plate time to be removed, we'll run the bins. In the past, I rode here and settled. Four vehicles about down the street. Recently, the one that just got roped was probably either a week ago or about two weeks ago. The plate was on the vehicle, it kicked back to Terran, so the vehicle was roped back in. We got issued with harassment, I'm sorry. That we got attacked and got ourselves punished for that. He's had cars that he wouldn't get started in, but had somebody tell him he was a gimmick started, so they could move cars. And had a lot of to do that. So yes, there are issues there. The street parking out in the front, whether it's driving or not, approached your business, you should not be parking here, period. Whether it's your A, ever night, we don't allow anywhere in the city. So I can kind of, I've tried to come out to make a left turn off of that street. You cannot see anything, period. I'm here under my truck, or you're... You cannot see traffic during the lockdown dicks. Because he's had two vehicles parked. That's why one of the vehicles was impounded, because it's sat there for months. So it had an ongoing issue under Nationwide and recent. As to the other shop across the street problem, they're doing the same thing. Their parking cars there, they're getting cited for it, too. There's a place come back to that business, and that's the biggest that gets the ticket. Comes back to an individual that has dropped their car there, then they get that ticket. I've been having two vehicles in the same day from this repair facility because the owner there didn't care about putting them on his lot. You have them in the street for two weeks straight. So two citations for roping both vehicles, tagged for forty-eight hours, and then impounded. And the owner still has not gotten the truck, the truck or the car that he had at his work facility out of impact.
What's the other facility?
Uh, I believe that one is the... It's somewhere next to the Shell Station.
It's to be Z's, I don't know.
Yeah, I don't remember the exact name right now. Yeah, I think it might be the Triple A one. I know it's right next to the Shell. Um, I know he's tried to make it better over there by moving his cars off the street. I do give him credit for that. There's a lot of that, I did talk to him and say, look, figure out how much money you're losing a month in parking tickets from Monday to Tuesday side. It was what, about thirty-five hundred dollars at least at one point? So he has made a difference in that aspect of trying to stop him getting the tickets. He had really asked. But I don't like the street parking out in front of the dicks. I don't like it.
The point is that this was approved to be an online auction dealer from the beginning. And that's when you were in the council, you were in the council, and that's what you approved it for. You weren't there. And somewhere along the line, they started bringing in cars and parking them there. It's way too small. I mean, you have room for what, five cars?
I'm not a...
Through the chair. That license that we're trying to approve right now, is that a dealership license? Or is it an online auction license?
It's not an online auction.
Okay, so they're changing the license.
It's been, this has been in cars for years.
Can we, um... I think I need to... Are you still... Oh, we have... So we got Jackson and Cartrac. So that I myself can do some investigating and see where we're at with this.
Through the chair, I was just saying?
Yes, just here. Yes. Yeah, okay. I was taking care of... And then we'll play on the... For the next meeting. Okay?
You stuck up there.
Not on here. No. All right, is it okay with you? So we're gonna do some investigating?
I gotta go investigate, I'm a bad boy. I came to the cities, and I told the city, I told the city that I could have kept the license after our old mission one minute. And the license, and then okay. We have, right now, we have seven hundred thousand dollars right now. And outstanding vehicle debt, because our vehicles are paid for by things on this company that was approved by the city, and we do it approved by the city. This is our life, you know? We can't close. If you're closed, you lose your state license. You can't close to sit and do this, and we didn't do anything wrong. We're the same business, not changing anything, we're not going to pass any more... I don't know what auction you're talking about. We purchased it.
Residents on market are so sick of this. They're tired of it.
They give you...
They want something done.
I have no time to work through the city.
It's too small to be a dealership.
Yeah, but you can't come in here today and tell me an existing business that I bought that was open in twenty twelve to be a used auto dealership that was given as only for a used...
Not in twenty twelve?
I didn't buy in twenty twelve. The original owner bonded it in twenty twelve. I bought it in twenty twenty February. The dealership was bonded in two thousand and twelve. And brought to you guys to the city, you guys approved it for a dealership, a used car.
Yeah. On one.
Okay, we're not gonna argue. We're gonna do some investigating, open on the... Okay? The deputy chief gave you permission to stay open until this issue is resolved. Okay? So...
Would you like to tell them about that? Because Linda's had to tell them.
As long as wait the city to get it out of our heads. I don't want any...
This is the first time that ever...
Today...
Okay. We're gonna, we're gonna table this, and we will discuss it after we do some investigating. And then we will take it from there, okay? Like it does, the chief has given you permission, the deputy chief, I'm sorry. To stay open as long as you're following the rules until this matters. Okay? You're welcome. Oh, sorry. It was Jackson and Cartrac.
Hey, Jackson?
Yes.
Honestly? Honestly?
Yeah.
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 Hey, my nuts, I don't think this will wait. I mean, it's been there for years. Never gets resolved. So I'd like to know if you have a roofie company that's better?
The whole roof or just the whole area?
I think the whole roof is good.
Whole roof?
The whole. And we have, we had a new roof on this building in twenty years. We've had it at sixteen, sixteen foot seven. Two plus.
Yes.
So, and it moves from this, it moves right over my desk, it just...
All right. Any discussion?
Yeah. Sure. All right.
First, I heard of it, there's a procedure to this. Just to contact us on the building's part, you're allowed to rope. I didn't know that she was gonna take over the rope job here, but that's... I was talking with you, and you could get the estimates because... Did you, did you do a work order? I'm just asking, because that's the first I heard you had one over your office, okay? Your office.
First you heard, Larry.
And I'm just asking you...
Okay.
It's gone on for years. You know it.
I reckon, I, I, not there, I've never heard that, first I heard. You want me to take you, does she take care of it?
We're gonna be professional. Yeah, there's been a motion. So are you gonna take care of the estimates, or what are you gonna do?
Larry.
Why don't you cross the motion for now?
As everybody knows here, there's a proper procedure. You're gonna bring it here and get me to check it. All you had to do, Linda, was pay your work order, you gotta sub hit you in the head in your office. You were not here to check it out. So instead, you come here and you say, hey, you wanna hold your book. So you should assign that factor, because I will go to your office and have you update my paper and have all the stuff out here anyway. I don't bother you, Linda. So all I appreciate from you is the procedure. And then if you don't get any results, take it to Rich. Rich is, could handle it from now. That should have never even got on the chat. Had I seen it earlier, I would have talked to you about it. You decided to come up here with a big issue, that's fine.
And making a big...
That's why we propose to stop right now, do the crosstalk.
A professional roofing company to come out and find it. Mike, how many times have you replaced the ceiling tiles in my office?
In your office, that's the first I heard.
Yeah, and there's one right in front of mine.
Yeah, well, that's still...
Well, Mike knows all about it, why don't you?
Because he didn't follow the procedure, he didn't work for it.
This has been going on for years. You didn't just have...
Okay. First on...
I, I wish, right? She can either handle it or... I really have to...
She, she can.
Jesus Christ.
Okay. Any other discussion? Same on, call the board.
Jackson?
I'm sorry.
Wake up, y'all.
That's gonna get some...
No. She said Larry, she said Larry.
That's what she said, and Larry, I don't forget.
Larry, we don't need to, right? You gotta check it out.
Is she gonna fill out a work order, or is she just gonna do this? If we come up here for everything that we need to do in the city, I can...
This is proper procedure of how things should be handled. This is not it.
That's not it. She didn't follow proper's procedure.
I agree with her.
And I'll decide that, and I heard, you know, and I'll bring it to you. But she decided to jump, good luck.
I decided to do something about something that hasn't been done for years. You've been trouble.
Okay. Okay.
It's not new.
Excuse me. We have a motion on the floor.
So who's gonna do it? Is it Ray Porter? He'll be happy to do it after he wins.
There is a thing.
It's funny, 'cause I was about to go.
Okay, we're moving on. All right. At this time, this audience participation become hard. Please state your interest.
No, man.
Um, there's...
Yeah. First of all, I want to help everybody with this. It was great, everybody's loved it, thank you, thank you. Renee, your people were awesome. And like I said, I'm telling you, we're staying in that corner. I would have had it with the white. Okay, Mark's... This is... Those two people, they, one thirty people is not wrong. We're being done, I'm careful, we have a big thing. So now I'm gonna start to sell the people. One, I'll let, so we can make a motion, so point David Lincoln. And I got three terms to vote on.
So Jamie Lincoln, um, this will be her jiggling?
Yes.
So I have that sheet.
Oh, here goes ahead, Bobby.
There's your eleven nineteen twenty-five. There's two of those, and then there's eleven eighteen twenty-six.
That was already due to twenty-six.
Oh, the twenty-six was just...
Oh, wait, no, it wasn't.
That was it, I got it right here.
So she could fill the expired term of auto replacement.
Eleven eighteen twenty-six.
Would that be okay?
Well, um, people are not supposed to come from commissions and make appointments.
She's asking the mayor of the council to make a motion.
So we get... I have some discussions. Some guardians. Martha's speaking, and I am.
Oh, so we're not gonna argue.
They don't have a forum. And we're supposed to do this hundred year...
Through the chair.
No, we're not gonna argue.
Listen, this is my heart's part, and then, um, like, Joe? Ever do one of us to do something for you? I would love for your verification, but we can't vote on it because we don't have a forum. So maybe in another meeting, we could. We can't vote on anything. So how are we supposed to do this hundred year? That's all I'm asking. How are we supposed to do this hundred year with four people? That's all I want to know.
I think there's no...
And let me tell you what. Martha's husband, how long has it been flying from Flint? Me and Martha both were in car accidents, and we made sure we were there. Is she not...
Joe, I'm sorry, you've said that for a couple of months.
Yeah. Yeah, we've been through this three months, we've been through this. She's not free. She's helping us out. We have a lot of people who would like to join. I don't know what, what's wrong with Jamie Lincoln. She is, um, a little... I'm just trying to get...
Through the chair. I missed the motion.
Thank you, Larry.
Okay.
Start the table.
The table, Jamie Lincoln, what date do you need that?
We are doing eleven eighteen twenty-six.
I'd like a few guys, because I'd like to know, I mean, that's not the right...
I made the motion.
Okay. I'm gonna make sure.
What is your...
Is it a full moon?
Autumn replacement. All right, so we have a motion by Wheeler. I can do it. Hold, hold on a second. Literally. No, a motion by Wheeler, who is that? Okay.
So I can't give the name of the second. Also...
Okay, hold on a second. We have a motion on the board. Well, we're gonna put that on pause because we have to vote. We have a motion on the table. So this is for table. How to vote. Yes.
See if you can get one on her phone.
Yeah.
Okay, now I'd like another motion for track for justice. There's two terms that are more than nineteen twenty five. And I've given everybody what Amber Jane makes.
Okay.
Who's the chair?
You can stand up if you.
Go ahead.
Want to make a motion to, oh, Joey, you made it outside.
He already did, sorry.
That was House four.
Okay, so it was Jackson and Marcy.
Sorry, I didn't hear it, listen.
Okay, what dates are we going with, eleven nineteen twenty five?
He's replacing the expired term of Nate Corella.
Okay.
Which you received.
I did.
Uh, when you receive a resignation from somebody, it's customary to re-raise counsel, if a tenant receives it and place it on file. He submitted that in January, February fifteenth, prior to meeting, and had we known.
No, you're not.
Had we known, we would replace him a long time. Uh, the next open position is not open because he needs to be removed by the.
You already voted on it.
Uh, his name is Dave Seal, but.
He's here.
He was never appointed.
He was never.
He was never appointed, he's still on the list, he was appointed.
He was appointed, but he was never sworn in, so we don't have to remove him, just like we didn't remove, um, um, Mr. Allen.
No, it wasn't about removing Mr. Allen, you were demanding a resignation from him, completely different.
Completely different. Was never sworn in.
Right.
So, he doesn't have very.
Here's the deal, the way the case works, there's rules, you can.
Absolutely.
In the colored ordinances, you are too, if he doesn't show up, doesn't get sworn in, you can't get ahold of him. Because when he, his appointment was tabled, his name on our agenda was Dave Saeed. S A E E D. Two weeks later, when he was appointed, on May first, his name was Dave Asseel, A S S E E L. Nobody knew how to get ahold of him. We don't even know the correct spelling of his name, because it was tabled one way, and then approved, two weeks later. Was a completely different spelling.
And he was never sworn in.
Well, we didn't have a clerk. There, we didn't have a clerk.
So, the chair, are you talking about a different position other than what was just nominated for a table?
Yes, yeah, because they're saying there's still another open position.
We're not talking about that right now, this is a, this is a, and then you go back. So, this is an expired term, eleven nineteen twenty five?
Uh, for Nate Corella?
Yes.
Yes.
There's a motion, there's a circuit, it's here.
Alright, how about please?
Yes.
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 Yes. Alright.
And, um, David, he's out here by our house, and I can't really scare anybody, he's a boss.
You better try to find your grandchild.
Oh, the great is here. Uh, thanks for our please for everything, and, I hope you guys don't want this, on Memorial Day, for all, after home. But, oh, okay, right here, no, a few more copies, but, yeah, and, um, Pfizer, you guys like the sponsor, Fresh, they're sponsors.
Did you, it's gonna be from, um, it's gonna be from, um, ten to like eight? Where are you guys playing?
Saids Field.
Oh, behind the Mills, go, go. Okay.
I don't know where I'm at.
Alright. All day tournament.
All day tournament, yeah, support them, if you.
Alright.
Think about it when you have or no?
No.
Good, how are you?
Go left, it's you.
This is, uh, in connection with correspondence that I sent to, uh, Selene, up to Ali and.
Can you see that every morning?
Yeah, one eight eight zero nine, that's it.
Okay.
So, this property has been operating as an auto repair facility for the past six years. My clients have owned the property since two thousand and five, their father's owned it before them. Um, and has always maintained continuous legal non-performing use without any modification of the building structure. On April twenty fourth, the city clerk and I, the CFO, for one of my client's property tenants, to continue his operating, that property as well. So, there's no reason provided in that correspondence. Um, subsequently, a correspondence issued by Mr. Coogan, um, indicated that there's a moratorium. Um, but the moratorium, as he stated, says, has a moratorium, reduce car sales shop and auto repair shops. The moratorium actually states on view, the view, this has been an odd mode of existing property use. For the last six, for the last sixty years. In any event, um, in that letter, Mr. Coogan stated that the property's legal non-performing use expired. Because supposedly the tenant that property vacated, as of January sixth. The property tenant actually vacated on the tenth, and since then, immediately afterwards, I, I ended up with the tenant. So, there.
And that's after right there, was the building inspected?
Uh.
Cause you can't just put a tenant into a building.
No, no, there, yeah, they're asking that, there was a refusal by the city to do inspection, in fact. My client was told to come pick up his money, that they're not gonna do an inspection, and that the property use is no longer a legal, um, an auto facility. And in doing so, they're relying on the, the moratorium. First of all, under law and under, um, uh, city ordinance twenty four five oh three, that use must be stopped. For six months, and it must be an intentional, uh, intent to abandon, my client has never had an intent to abandon, it would not set legal for six months. Um, at this point in time, we're trying to get some guidance and understanding as to one, why, uh, my client's tenant was not getting inspected, denied a C O. And what the basis is for claiming that the use, the non-performing use on that property is bound no longer again. I issued a correspondence, uh, to Mr. Coogan, I copy Mr. of all, unfortunately, not here, asking for guidance on this, and I haven't received any. I might fucking ignore it as well.
Sure, absolutely, Brad, you want to talk then? How about this?
I do know, I have to worry with this facility, this is the one that the people that were in there vacated.
Correct.
Their license down the street to the new location.
Correct, yes.
I, I really think that I should frame, um, really speaking about this, I know this is an corporate counsel, I know he has had discussions with Mr. Coogan. And I think this is a matter for him to speak on, and I don't think I'm really in position to speak and publicly turn on something as an indication.
So, but did you refuse them an inspection?
Well, yeah, we don't, we didn't give them a, a C O inspection, because we were applying for a mechanic shop, right? Well, we were formed by council, but it can't be a mechanic shop, okay? So, why are we gonna inspect something that make them pay for something that they can't try?
Okay.
So, so that was just recently, they, they, they applied back in January, they just applied here in the last, in the last month, not January.
Did everybody go to response?
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you. Um, first of all, this banner from my client's standpoint is not an indication, you're about to file a lawsuit against it.
Okay.
Um, that was an intent actually of my initial correspondence at dispatch, was to try and get some understanding to avoid a lawsuit. Um, that's the first thing, second thing, you're correct, there would've been an application made back in January, because the tenant at that property didn't vacate until late April. Or, or early April, so, uh, application was actually issued on the sixteenth, if I understand. So, I'm just trying to get some guidance, because we are, we're trying to avoid a lawsuit, I think, uh, uh, Mr. Coogan, actually, the latter indicated that city, uh, is, is harder than cities. Um, and I'm just trying to get some understanding as to how the use expired.
So, hold on one second. So, I'm very familiar with this property, um, I was over there after the tenant vacated the property. And just from physical site, there, you can see there's a lot of violations, so, there would be no way that the owner of the property would be able to put anybody in there. Until that property is actually inspected and brought up to code.
Correct.
And I seen a for rent sign on the front of the building, and I came back to the city and let Brad know. That there's proper procedure to go about handling things, and one tenant moves out, you don't just move another tenant in, that's not how it works from here. So, correct, and he wasn't willing to give you one, because the building, one, you're not gonna give a C O, because what you're applying for was a new business. And they still have to come out and inspect the building, so, and I know that that tenant had been in there for eighteen years, and did nothing to the building. He put all of his own money into the building.
He didn't go to nothing. This I own the place.
The tenant, the tenant wasn't there, I, I don't, I don't believe the tenant was there for eighteen years, but I don't wanna end up.
Okay, um, he stated that there were, so, let me just give you a friend, I was over there one day and it was raining outside, and it was pouring inside the building. So, how do you fix cars when it's raining as much inside as it is outside? So, obviously, there were some issues that needed to be addressed, and the tenant said he was no longer willing to put his money into this facility. That he was going to move his business license to a different facility, because he was done dealing with your clients.
What's your license? Check, check, check. So, I think the major issue is, um, that the tenant had, um, a mechanic's license. Wasn't the building, he can let it to whoever he wants, they just cannot over there as a mechanic shop, or he can't auto related businesses. Because the city does have a large auto, we can't, you know, auto, auto related businesses, that's, that's just where it is. Okay, uh, if that's the city's position, that, that was gonna clarify to my client. There's, there's, there was, not really correspondence issue. Yeah, we had, we had a special meeting in regards to, reached out, and he didn't show up. What, they look at me, please? There's, I can't, I can't, can't tell you. Would've been before or after, did it, right?
Twenty four.
I'm sorry.
It would've happened before, but I don't know exactly.
Yeah, I do know that, um, asking him, he, this is that, brand new here, they didn't show up. Um, and really wanted to talk to him about that, because, because the client had the mechanic's license. I'm not sure. Okay, so he, there's, so he wouldn't be able, I said, as far as auto, he, he can't accept any other auto related businesses in the city of the auto related business. Well, what's happening is, my, my understanding, again, I could be incorrect, but my understanding is that there was another property. Where my client's had, decided to move for multiple people to try to, uh, open a mechanic shop, and where did I? And now my client's tenant is being offered there, but this use is now basically being stripped, because the property now is going to be rendered useless. Because the issue's gonna be that it's intentional abandonment, excuse me, I'm, yeah, the prop, the property's not useless, he can rent the property out for it as another business. He just cannot rent it out as any auto related business, and he has to do the updates on the business, on, on the building. As far as the, the other, uh, the tenant, he came to us with his concern, with concern of it, and he was telling us about the needs and all of the, all the things that weren't done to the bu, building. That's why we gave him a special allowance to go to the building down the street.
So, it's not a new business open, he just transferred his license to a different address? So, the business license was listed at that address, and he wasn't opening a new business, he just moved locations. Because that facility was no longer fitting his needs as his, um, auto construction.
Plus, uh, the duty of reading, allowing him to move his business, precludes my client from using that property as an auto repair facility.
Absolutely not.
Which is a, excuse me, which is a legal non-performing use for the last sixty years, that if it's up to repair, if it's up to repair. And the repairs are made, is it your position that a new tenant can move in, also repair it, okay?
Not for auto related business, because he could've, he could've prevented all this, and he would've just did the repairs from the get-go.
Okay.
If he would've done the repairs, the tenant would still be there, and he would still be getting rent on that tenant for the business. But when you have things that take place, like the, the raining inside the property as much as it's raining outside, and they're in there trying to fix vehicles, working with, most new vehicles are a lot of electrical. You can see where that becomes a hazard, right?
What time do we see that, single red?
Alright, so your time is up.
Yeah, I don't know a question.
No, it's, it's five minutes per person, and I will get in contact with Mr. Coogan tomorrow, and find out where we stand on this, and what his thoughts are. Do you have a business card?
I don't have one, but the correspondence issue has only contacted me.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, at the, at. Okay, so, we had, um, a workshop, we talked about Enker Park. We gave you, we voted on the section for, um, where the tennis courts are. Um, we stated that we would have the TPW dig up the soccer, or the tennis courts, and you could make that your soccer field. I expressed at that time that we have Little League baseball, and we have Little League football, we didn't pay, the city did not pay, and I'm able to create those programs. We gave them a facility, they actually rented that space from us, um, and that is their field for their leagues. So, I expressed that when you guys came and said, you guys can put up a pole barn, you can put in a shed, if you guys had talked about wanting to return. I said, whatever you guys wanted to do, you could do it, but it would be at your expense, so.
I'm wondering if the city was gonna build a field?
No, we're not building a field.
That's why it was, I don't know if that was the intention.
No.
Talk about what was made, see, we've come up, that the city was gonna build.
Right, we could remove, we said, the, um, tennis courts, and if there's some trees that you need to be removed, so that your soccer field can fit, I'm sure we can take care of that too. But as far as actually building your soccer field, you're not gonna build anything.
You just need to build a soccer field.
Yeah. Okay.
I just need actual, eventually, I think, this is going to be a number, we can talk about two and a half years, and.
Yep.
Do you focus, do you have, do you have an update, a claim or anything that we can, go ahead, please?
Stop, hold on, sorry to add more to your plate, Larry, but is there a possibility that you guys could go over and look at Enker Park where the tennis courts are?
Yeah.
And I don't know what your schedule is, um, but maybe you guys could, or somebody from your league should go over there and meet with him, and see about, um. What trees would need to be taken down, or, I know that the, the tennis courts have to be taken out, obviously, um, but anything else besides that would be up to you guys to worry. I do believe that.
It's been a while, and, you know.
Take a look over.
Yeah, um, um, I do remember us giving you, uh, approving a couple of things, and I do remember saying that we're going to. System, building a few things, patches.
We were gonna remove the tennis courts, and I don't remember trees, but there's trees in the, obviously, you can't play soccer around trees, so we would have to remove those too, right? That makes sense, um, but as far as building something, we gave them permission to build a shed or a pole barn, just like Little League football did at McInity, they did a pole barn. And they out, and they also did at, um.
I have no issue with that at all, as long as you can.
Do you remember the date? So, I'll go back to the.
One, it's like, every second, I could be very wrong. Could be wrong.
October, here, it's, it's October, right?
But you can just have it. Can have it. Actually, I don't remember, I can, I can get that to you guys, I think, I think that's a little more.
So, we'd be more than happy to help you out with, um, with those things, or remove all the tennis courts, um, and if there's any trees in the way for you to do your soccer field. Um, so, you guys can coordinate with Larry and go over there and we'll get, we'll detect and see them.
That's great.
Alright, does that sound like a plan? Alright, perfect.
You'd be slow.
You gotta be quick. Um, A M to finals, gonna be a six day, and then the award is gonna be seven days, so, everyone's more than welcome to join us. It's gonna be the first annual Oklahoma Horror Six Tournament, we're gonna keep those, like, stay alive, it's gonna be every year, every year, on top of all the other day.
Future, future, you can chew your mouth, you're gonna have forty one dozen of them.
What is it?
You're gonna have forty one dozen of them.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, make sure your nose.
The whole team's are gonna come first, and then Memorial Day.
So we, motion to recess?
Okay, sorry, yes.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, we're gonna do a motion to recess because we're gonna do a half break.
Yes.
I have a motion.
So why we double time?
And I need support.
Four.
Okay, move.